Good evening, the forty-fifth meeting of the seventy-third term of your Baltimore City Council is now called to order. As a reminder to members of the general public, if we could please take our seats. As a reminder to the general public, that wasn't for you guys, council members need to be in their seats for us to start a meeting. As a reminder to the general public, if you please continue to wear your mask, this council is fully vaccinated as well as boosted, and we truly appreciate your attendance here. Also, if you could please remember to turn your electronic devices off or at a minimum, put them on silent so we can have a meeting without interruptions. Our invocation this evening will be delivered by Ms. Reverend Benita Keen Johnson, who is the interim rector at Church of Holy Trinity. Reverend Keen Johnson, it is our pleasure and we welcome you, thank you so much.
Let us pray. Almighty and all sovereign God, we ask you to fill our city political leaders with wisdom, understanding, discernment, and knowledge. Grant them favor, increase their faith, and prepare them to pursue your excellence. Draw them to you and cause them to know and fulfill your purposes. Remind them, because we all forget from time to time, especially in the noisiness of what passes for political debate today, that they are not only leaders but also servants, and that they are called to serve the common good of all. May they speak out for the citizens of Baltimore when it is time to speak out, and listen patiently and receptively when it's time to listen. May they enact ordinances and resolutions appropriately. May they always be guided by the spirit of community, by the spirit of justice, and by the spirit of love. We ask that you mercifully accept the prayers of your people and strengthen them to do your will in the name of the Father, the Son, and the Holy Spirit. Amen.
Amen. Thank you so much Reverend Keen Johnson. At this time, if everyone could stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
For our showcase this evening, it is my pleasure and honor to welcome Ms. Octavia Coach Tay Robinson, executive director and founder of My Girls Reign. My Girls Reign is committed to seeing young girls in underserved communities of Baltimore develop the necessary skills to drive through, to thrive through performance arts such as competitive cheer, dance, and tumble. At this time, please come up and take the mic.
Good evening. Thank you for this opportunity to showcase our organization, My Girls, as mentioned. My Girls was started as a vision in two thousand and fifteen, just as a passion that I had to give back to underserved girls in Baltimore City. We create an affordable environment that provides tranquility to the girls. We put a focus on their wellness through mental, emotional, physical, and social health. Listen, trying to, I'm a little nervous. Through their emotional wellness. We do this through some guiding principles, which is teamwork, dedication, and perseverance. The girls, as you see, they are, you know, standing here so eloquently at their age. I'll let them also tell you their name and their age as well. So we're able to do the services we are, we do, through our lovely home in District Ten. We have been supported by that community, we have been funded by multiple organizations to provide opportunities. We do summer camps for the kids, we do this through the sport of competitive cheer, which is a sport that prior to our establishment has been underserved in Baltimore City. As well as this year, we have introduced competitive dance, and we also do tumbling classes at, again, affordable rates that are like a quarter of what you would pay. We are national champions, we are also thriving through our girls. We had our first graduating senior this year, she received a full ride to Coppin State University for both academics and for her cheer, she's a part of their cheer team now as well. I think I've touched like some of the major points for us. We are having a showcase this week, we would love, if you guys would love to come out and see us. It will be at Forest Park this Saturday at 1:00 PM. We'll be at Forest Park High School showcasing all of the girls' talents. And I'll let them introduce their self and their age, and they can maybe tell you how long they've been here.
I'm Jordan, I've been here since I was six.
I'm eleven.
She grabbing it, ain't even her time.
Hi, my name is Zara, and I've been there since I was three and now I'm five.
This is her first year actually being on a team where she is competing for a first place, first, second, third. Her five, the first years, they just get scored, they don't get, they get like excellent or superior. So she was saying on the right here that she's nervous for her first competition next weekend because this is the first time where she's actually going up, and she doesn't want second place, she said.
My name is Journey, and... I've been here since I was three. Now I'm six.
Hi, my, hi, my name is Cadence, I've been, I've been here until I was six, now I'm seven.
Yeah, so last year was Cadence' first year, she was on our prep team. Cadence' team went to Florida and they placed second out of twenty-three teams last year. And this year, Cadence is on our elite team, and we're also going for that national title again.
My name is Kaia, I've been here since I was five, and now I'm seven.
All right, and then Kaia same as well, last year she was on our team that went to Florida representing Baltimore, placed second place out of twenty-three teams. And like I said, this year will be their first year going as an elite team. So we thank you for opportunity to showcase who we are, we look forward to continued partnership. We love what we do for Baltimore, we love representing Baltimore City. We love bringing healthy aspects, not only through the children, it becomes a sisterhood for the parents. They are working together, a lot of them single fam, maybe single-family homes, some may not. They work together to get the kids there for busy schedules, it's a real sisterhood community. We would love for you to look into us more and see what we do, and we look forward to further partnership.
Do you have a website or email address?
Yes, we do, our website is www.mygirlsreign, reign, R-E-I-G-N, dot org. And our, you can send an email to theroyalfamily@mygirlsreign.org.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Please give it up for Coach Tay as well as Girls Reign. Thank you, girls, bye-bye. At this time, Mr. Clerk, if you could please read the roll.
President Mosby, Cohen, McCray, Dorsey, Conway, Schleifer, Middleton, Torrance, Burnett, Bullock, Porter, Costello, Stokes, Ramos. Mr. President, we have a quorum.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk, now we will proceed to the adoption of the journals.
Mr. President, the Journal of the November twenty-first, two thousand and twenty-two proceedings are on the council members' desks.
Without objection, the Journal will be adopted, hearing and seeing none, the Journal is now adopted. Bills signed and vetoed by the mayor can be found at the beginning of page two of the agenda. We'll now turn to bills to be introduced, Mr. Clerk, if you could please read the first bill.
Council Bill two-two dash zero-three-zero-two, sale of property, twenty-eight oh-one Hartford Road, a portion of Block four-one-nine-nine, revised Lot nine. For the purpose of authorizing the mayor and city council of Baltimore to sell at either public or private sale all of its interest in certain property that is located at twenty-eight oh-one Hartford Road and consisting of a portion of Block four-one-nine-nine, revised Lot nine, and is no longer needed for public use and providing for a special effective date. Sponsor, council president, on behalf of the comptroller, council member Ramos.
This bill has been assigned to Ways and Means Committee, Mr. Clerk, next bill.
City Council Bill two-two dash zero-three-zero-three, city streets closing, a portion of Marion Street. For the purpose of condemning and closing air rights above a portion of Marion Street extending westerly one-hundred-and-three feet, more or less, from Kimmel Alley, beginning at a horizontal plane of fourteen feet above street level and closing subterranean rights below a portion of Marion Street extending westerly sixty-two point five feet, more or less, from Kimmel Alley, beginning at a horizontal plane at elevation sixty-two feet based on Baltimore City Survey Control System as shown on a plat numbered three-three-zero dash A dash twenty-eight A, Sheets one and two, dated June twentieth, two thousand and twenty-two, prepared by the survey section and filed with the Department of Transportation and providing for a special effective date. Sponsor, President Mosby, on behalf of the administration.
This bill has been assigned to ECD, Mr. Clerk, next bill.
City Council Bill two-two dash zero-three-zero-four, supplementary general fund operating appropriation, Health Department, three hundred and ten thousand dollars. For the purpose of providing a supplementary general fund operating appropriation in the amount of three hundred and ten thousand dollars to the Health Department, Service seven-twenty-three, advocacy for seniors, to provide funding for fiscal year two thousand and twenty-two expenses and providing for a special effective date. Sponsor, President Mosby, on behalf of the administration.
This bill has been assigned to Ways and Means, Mr. Clerk, next bill.
City Council Bill two-two dash zero-three-zero-five, supplementary general fund operating appropriation, Health Department, one point five million dollars. For the purpose of providing a supplementary general fund operating appropriation in the amount of one million five hundred thousand dollars to the Health Department, Service three-oh-three, clinical services, to provide funding for fiscal year two thousand and twenty-two expenses and providing for a special effective date. Sponsor, President Mosby, on behalf of the administration.
This bill has been assigned to Ways and Means as well, Mr. Clerk, next bill.
City Council Bill two-two dash zero-three-zero-six, supplementary general fund operating appropriation, Health Department, thirty-two million dollars. For the purpose of providing a supplementary general fund operating appropriation in the amount of thirty-two million dollars to the Health Department, Service three-one-five, emergency services, health, to provide funding for fiscal year two thousand and twenty-two expenses and provide for a special effective date. Sponsor, President Mosby, on behalf of the administration.
This bill has been assigned to Ways and Means Committee, Mr. Clerk, next bill.
City Council Bill two-two dash zero-three-zero-seven, supplementary general fund operating appropriation, Health Department, thirty-five thousand dollars. For the purpose of providing a supplementary general fund operating appropriation in the amount of thirty-five thousand dollars to the Health Department, Service three-ten, school health services, to provide funding for fiscal year two thousand and twenty-two expenses and providing for a special effective date. Sponsor, President Mosby, on behalf of the administration.
This bill has been assigned to Ways and Means Committee, Mr. Clerk, next bill.
City Council Bill two-two dash zero-three-zero-eight, supplementary general fund operating appropriation, Department of General Services, seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. For the purpose of providing a supplementary general fund operating appropriation in the amount of seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars to the Department of General Services, Service seven-two-six, Administration, General Services, to provide funding for fiscal year two thousand and twenty-two expenses and providing for a special effective date. Sponsor, President Mosby, on behalf of the administration.
This bill has been assigned to Ways and Means Committee, Mr. Clerk, next bill.
Council Bill two-two dash zero-three-zero-nine, supplementary general fund operating appropriation, Department of General Services, six hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. For the purpose of providing a supplementary general fund operating appropriation in the amount of six hundred and fifty thousand dollars to the Department of General Services, Service seven-three-four, Capital Projects Division, to provide funding for fiscal year two thousand and twenty-two expenses and providing for a special effective date. Sponsor, President Mosby, on behalf of the administration.
This bill has been assigned to Ways and Means Committee, Mr. Clerk, next bill.
City Council Bill two-two dash zero-three-one-zero, supplementary general fund operating appropriation, Department of General Services, eight million four hundred thousand dollars. For the purpose of providing a supplementary general fund operating appropriation in the amount of eight million four hundred thousand dollars to the Department of General Services, Service seven-three-one, Facilities Management, to provide funding for fiscal year two thousand and twenty-two expenses and providing for a special effective date. Sponsor, President Mosby, on behalf of the administration.
This bill has been assigned to Ways and Means Committee, Mr. Clerk, next bill.
City Council Bill two-two dash zero-three-one-one, supplementary general fund operating appropriation, Department of Finance, one million nine hundred thousand dollars. For the purpose of providing a supplementary general fund operating appropriation in the amount of one million nine hundred thousand dollars to the Department of Finance, Service seven-oh-four, Accounting, to provide funding for fiscal year two thousand and twenty-two expenses and provide for a special effective date. Sponsor, President Mosby, on behalf of the administration.
This bill has been assigned to Ways and Means Committee, Mr. Clerk, next bill.
City Council Bill two-two dash zero-three-one-two, supplementary general fund operating appropriation, Mayorality, Convention Center Hotel, five million three hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. For the purpose of providing a supplementary general fund operating appropriation in the amount of five million three hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars to the Mayorality, Convention Center Hotel Service, five-three-five, Convention Center Hotel.
This bill has been assigned, oh, sorry.
To provide funding for fiscal year two thousand and twenty-two expenses and provide for a special effective date. Sponsor, President Mosby, on behalf of the administration.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk, this bill has been assigned to Ways and Means Committee, Mr. Clerk, next bill.
City Council Bill two-two dash zero-three-one-three, supplementary general fund operating appropriation, Mayorality, miscellaneous general expenses, twenty-two million four hundred thousand dollars. For the purpose of providing a supplementary general fund operating appropriation in the amount of twenty-two million four hundred thousand dollars to the Mayorality, miscellaneous general expenses, Service one-two-two, miscellaneous general expenses, to provide funding for fiscal year two thousand and twenty-two expenses and providing for a special effective date. Sponsor, President Mosby, on behalf of the administration.
This bill has been assigned to Ways and Means Committee, Mr. Clerk, next bill.
City Council Bill two-two dash zero-three-one-four, supplementary general fund operating appropriation, Department of Planning, four hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars. For the purpose of providing a supplementary general fund operating appropriation in the amount of four hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars to the Department of Planning, Service seven-six-eight, Administration, Planning, to provide funding for fiscal year two thousand and twenty-two expenses and providing for a special effective date. Sponsor, President Mosby, on behalf of the administration.
This bill has been assigned to Ways and Means Committee, Mr. Clerk, next bill.
City Council Bill two-two dash zero-three-one-five, supplementary general fund operating appropriation, Department of Planning, thirteen million five hundred and twenty thousand dollars. For the purpose of providing a supplementary general fund operating appropriation in the amount of thirteen million five hundred and twenty thousand dollars to the Department of Planning, Service seven-six-five, Planning for a Sustainable Baltimore, to provide funding for fiscal year two thousand and twenty-two expenses and providing for a special effective date. Sponsor, President Mosby, on behalf of the administration.
This bill has been assigned to Ways and Means Committee, Mr. Clerk, next bill.
City Council Bill two-two dash zero-three-one-six, supplementary general fund operating appropriation. Supplementary general fund operating appropriation, Department of Public Works, two million seven hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. For the purpose of providing a supplementary general fund operating appropriation in the amount of two million seven hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars to the Department of Public Works, Service seven, or six-seven-six, Administration, DPW, to provide funding for fiscal year two thousand and twenty-two expenses and providing for a special effective date. Sponsor, President Mosby, on behalf of the administration.
This bill has been assigned to Ways and Means Committee, Mr. Clerk, next bill.
City Council Bill two-two dash zero-three-one-seven, supplementary general fund operating appropriation, Department of Transportation, one million five hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. For the purpose of providing a supplementary general fund operating appropriation in the amount of one million five hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars to the Department of Transportation, Service six-eight-eight, Snow and Ice Removal, to provide funding for fiscal year two thousand and twenty-two expenses and providing for a special effective date. Sponsor, President Mosby, on behalf of the administration.
This bill has been assigned to Ways and Means Committee, Mr. Clerk, next bill.
City Council Bill two-two dash zero-three-one-eight, supplementary general fund operating appropriation, Department of Transportation, two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. For the purpose of providing a supplementary general fund operating appropriation in the amount of two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars to the Department of Transportation, Service five-hundred, Street Lighting, to provide funding for fiscal year two thousand and twenty-two expenses and providing for a special effective date. Sponsor, President Mosby, on behalf of the administration.
This bill has been assigned to the Ways and Means Committee, before you continue, Mr. Clerk, just want folks here to know, folks that are able to see it streamed live online, that there is something wrong with TV twenty-five with the actual signal right now. We've gotten permission from the Law Department that we're still good with Open Meetings Act because the media is actually here, so we're going to continue rolling, we're not going to stop the meeting. So I just want everyone to kind of understand and know that. So, media folks, if you could tweet that out, I don't know if folks are out there wanting to see the, watching TV twenty-five, but they're having a signal issue at the moment. The Law Department has confirmed that we're okay to continue. So at that point, Mr. Clerk, if you could please read the next bill.
City Council Bill two-two dash zero-three-one-nine, supplementary general fund operating appropriation, Department of Transportation, two million five hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. For the purpose of providing a supplementary general fund operating appropriation in the amount of two million five hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars to the Department of Transportation, Service six-nine-seven, Traffic Safety, to provide funding for fiscal year two thousand and twenty-two expenses and providing for a special effective date. Sponsor, President Mosby, on behalf of the administration.
This bill has been assigned to Ways and Means, Mr. Clerk, please read the next bill.
City Council Bill twenty-two dash zero-three-two-zero, zoning conditional use conversion of a single-family dwelling unit to two dwelling units in the R-seven zoning district, variances four-twenty-seven Gus Ryan Street. For the purpose of permitting, subject to certain conditions, the conversion of a single-family dwelling unit to two dwelling units in the R-seven zoning district on the property known as four-twenty-seven Gus Ryan Street, Block six-three-four-five, Lot zero-three-seven, as outlined in red on the accompanying plat and granting variances from certain bulk regulations, lot area size. Sponsor, Cohen.
This bill has been assigned to ECD, Mr. Clerk, next bill.
City Council Bill twenty-two dash zero-three-two-one, rezoning fourteen-nineteen to fourteen-thirty-one Bank Street and four-oh-nine South Spring Street. For the purpose of changing the zoning for the properties known as fourteen-nineteen to fourteen-thirty-one Bank Street, Block one-four-three-three, Lots zero-four-three, zero-four-four, zero-four-five, zero-four-six, zero-four-seven, and zero-four-eight slash zero-five-zero, and four-oh-nine South Spring Street, Block one-four-three-three, Lot zero-five-one slash zero-six-zero, as outlined in red on the accompanying plat, from the R-eight and IMU-one zoning districts to the C-two zoning district, and providing for a special effective date. Sponsor, Cohen.
This bill has been assigned to ECD, Mr. Clerk, next bill.
City Council Bill twenty-two dash zero-three-two-two, zoning conditional use conversion of a single-family dwelling unit to two dwelling units in the R-eight zoning district, variances eighteen-oh-one Holland Street. For the purpose of permitting, subject to certain conditions, the conversion of a single-family dwelling unit to two dwelling units in the R-eight zoning district on the property known as eighteen-oh-one Holland Street, Block zero-two-two-five, Lot zero-zero-one, as outlined in red on the accompanying plat and granting variances from certain bulk regulations, lot area size, and off-street parking requirements. Sponsor, Bullock.
This bill has been assigned to ECD, Mr. Clerk, please read the next bill.
City Council Bill two-two dash zero-three-two-three, zoning conditional use parking lot thirty-six-eighteen and thirty-six-twenty Elm Avenue. For the purpose of permitting, subject to certain conditions, the establishment, maintenance, and operation of an open off-street parking area on the properties known as thirty-six-eighteen Elm Avenue, Block thirty-five-thirty-eight, Lot zero-three-eight, and thirty-six-twenty Elm Avenue, Block three-five-three-eight, Lot zero-three-seven, as outlined in red on the accompanying plat and providing for a special effective date. Sponsor, Ramos.
This bill has been assigned to ECD, Mr. Clerk, please read the next bill.
City Council Bill two-two dash zero-three-two-four, zoning conditional use parking, forty-oh-one Roland Avenue. For the purpose of permitting, subject to certain conditions, the establishment, maintenance, and operation of an open off-street parking area on the property known as forty-oh-one Roland Avenue, Block three-five-nine-four-A, Lot zero-zero-one, as outlined in red on the accompanying plat. Sponsor, Ramos.
This bill has been assigned to ECD, Mr. Clerk, please read the last and final bill.
City Council Bill two-two dash zero-three-two-five, zoning conditional use conversion of a single-family dwelling unit to two dwelling units in the R-seven zoning district, variances four-six-six Hornell Street. For the purpose of permitting, subject to certain conditions, the conversion of a single-family dwelling unit to two dwelling units in the R-seven zoning district on the property known as four-six-six Hornell Street, Block six-three-four-five, Lot zero-two-three, as outlined in red on the accompanying plat and granting variances from certain bulk regulations, lot area size, and off-street parking requirements. Sponsor, Cohen.
This bill has been assigned to ECD, that wraps up bills to be introduced tonight. You can find the consent calendar in Section A on the back of the agenda, is there a motion to approve the consent calendar? Is there a second? It's been moved and properly seconded, all those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it, the motion carries, and the consent calendar is now approved. You can find the consent calendar again in Section A on the back of the agenda. We will now move to bills on second reader, before we do so, I please would like to recognize Chairman Costello.
Thank you, Mr. President, I move we read short titles for second and third reader for the duration of the meeting.
There's a motion on the floor. It's been moved and properly seconded, for us to be in short titles for the duration of the meeting, all in favor, please say aye. All those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it, we will be in short titles for the remainder of the meeting. The first and only bill that we have tonight on second reader, and just for everyone's information and knowledge, not a whole lot on second reader, not a lot of dialogue, there probably will be no debate on this particular item. That's why the fact that we're still not necessarily streaming appropriately through TV twenty-five, but we have the media here, we're still moving on with the meeting. If there was probably a more issue that would invoke some level of dialogue or debate between us on second reader, obviously, it would probably be important for us to allow the citizens to have access to see that as it plays out. So I just wanted to kind of provide that information to you. At this time, Mr. Clerk, if you could please read the first and only bill on second reader.
City Council Bill two-two dash zero-two-nine-three, sale of property, thirteen-twenty-one Filbert Street.
At this time, the body would like to recognize Chairman of the committee, Chairman Costello, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President, committee held a hearing on this bill, I move the bill favorably.
Is that a motion? It's moved and properly seconded, all those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it, this bill is approved and will move on. Members, the clearing of bill status list can be found on page nine of the agenda today. If you see any ordinance or resolutions that you would like to keep active in committee, please notify our Executive Secretary, Natwana Austin, before December the eighth. Note that this list will be published again on the December the eighth meeting. Any bills that are not requested to remain active before conclusion of December the eighth meeting will be withdrawn. At this point, we're going to go into committee announcements. Chair, when you hear your name, please stand or please let us know if you have anything to tell us at this point. First, we're going to go to Madam Vice President, ECD, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President, I have a nice little list here, so please be patient.
Bear with you.
The Economic and Community Development Committee would like to announce the following hearings, which will be held in the Clarence Dewburne Chambers at City Hall and online via Webex. And the first bill is a bill that we're adding to an already scheduled hearing, and that's January twenty-fourth, two thousand and twenty-three, at two fifteen PM, and that's Bill number twenty-two dash oh-one-two-eight-R, investigational hearing, Emergency Rental Assistance Program. Sponsor, Burnett. On January thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-two, at two PM. On January 31st, 2022, at 2:00 PM, we will hear Bill Number 22-0254, the Office of Aging as an independent agency, sponsors Cohen and Middleton. On February 7th, 2023, I have a list here of landmarks, mostly, but at 2:00 PM, Bill Number 22-0204, vacant structures, 311 complaint fines. It's a, we'll have a voting session first, sponsor the president. At 2:05 PM, we'll hear Bill Number 22-0262, landmark list, exteriors of Baltimore City Engine Company 14 Firehouse, sponsor Bullock. At 2:10 PM, Bill Number 22-0263, landmark list, exteriors Harlem Theater, sponsor Bullock. At 2:15 PM, Bill Number 22-0264, a landmark list, exteriors, Keton Railroad Transfer Bridge, sponsor Cohen. At 20, at 2:20 PM, Bill Number 22-0265, landmark list, exteriors of 3818 Roland Avenue, sponsor Ramos. At 2:25 PM, Bill Number 22-0277, landmark list, Reed Callaway House, sponsor Torrance. And finally, on February 28th, 2023, at 2:00 PM, Bill Number 21-0076R, investigative hearing, Baltimore Gas and Electric Decision Making, sponsor Ramos. And just a statement, council members, just please be patient as we, as I continue to work to get hearings on. As you see today, there's another long list, and I try my best to put ordinances and things like that first, and resolutions, we kind of, we know they're important, but we want to, you know, I kind of squeeze those in as we move along, and you see we're now in, towards the end of February, so please be, please be patient. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Vice President, as well as committee members. You've done an amazing job. We've had a lot of bills come through ECD the past two years. At this time, we're going to turn to E W Y, Education, Workforce, and Youth. Chairman Stokes, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Education, Workforce, and Youth Committee will hold a hearing on Thursday, December the 15th, at 10:00 AM, for Council Resolution 22-013R, informational hearing, hiring initiatives, Spanish speakers, Spanish speakers at the request of Councilwoman Ramos. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we're going to go to Health, Environment, and Technology. Chairwoman McCray, thank you so much. Next up, Public Safety Government Operations, Chairman Conway.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Public Safety and Government Operations, we've got a couple of, we've got a lot of announcements going through April. This is for LO 22-0030. All these meetings will be held at 1:00 PM, of course, here, and this is Legislative Oversight, Crime Reduction, and Violence Prevention. We did this under a new LO, but this is our regular check-ins with the Police Department and Monty. So we're going to, I'm just going to run through the dates and times, just so we have it all. One is going to be on Wednesday, January 11th, 2023, at 1:01 PM. Wednesday, January 25th, 2023, at 1:00 PM. Wednesday, February 8th, 2023, at 1:00 PM. Wednesday, February 22nd, 2023, at 1:00 PM. Wednesday, March 8th, 2023, at 1:00 PM. Wednesday, March 22nd, 2023, at 1:00 PM. Wednesday, April 12th, 2023, at 1:00 PM. And Wednesday, April 26th, 2023, at 1:00 PM. This is all for LO 22-0030, Legislative Oversight, Crime Reduction, and Violence Prevention. Thank you, Mr.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Next up, we're going to go to Rules and Legislative Oversight. Chairman Slyfer, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Rules and Legislative Oversight Committee will hold multiple executive appointments for the members of the Baltimore City Commission for Women, starting with EA 22-0137, Keon Abdul Malik, EA 22-0138, Miriam Carion, EA 22-0139, Saria Desakon, EA 22-0140, Caroline Jewell, EA 22-0141, Yasmin Karman, EA 22-0142, Ciara Miles, EA 22-0143, Monica Mitchell, EA 22-0144, Robin Ann Neverdon, EA 22-0145, Anna Rodney, EA 22-0146, Tevis Simon, EA 22-0147, Ellis Mothers, EA 22-0148, Stephanie Solberan, EA 22-0149, Gab Sussman, EA 22-0150, Sarah Elizabeth Whaley, and all of these hearings will begin at 10:00 AM. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Just, just we want to give the date one more time, Thursday, December 8th, at 10:00 AM. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chair. And last but certainly not least, we will go to Ways and Means. Chairman Costello, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move to suspend rules 10-2 and 10-3 to announce a hearing.
Without objection, rules 10-2 and 10-3 will be suspended. Hearing and seeing none, rules 10-2 and 10-3 are suspended.
Thank you, Mr. President. Ways and Means Committee will hold a hearing on Tuesday, December 6th, which is tomorrow, at 10:00 AM, on Council Bill 22-0302, sale of property, 2801 Hartford Road, a portion of Block 4199, revised lot 9. Thank you, Mr. President.
And just for the public knowledge, what we're doing with this particular bill is, this was a chunk of property that was already sold to Morgan State, a small slice of it or a slice of it, I'm not sure the size of it, was left out, so we're going back to correct the record. There's, the property has to be conveyed to Morgan for appropriate action in Annapolis, so that's why we're looking to call it in today. With that said, the committee is a whole, will hold a work session on City Council Bill 22-195, Inclusionary Housing for Baltimore City, on Monday, December the 12th, at 5:00 PM. The hearing will be televised live on Charm TV, as well as you can watch it on T, on Channel 25. With that, we're going to move to regular announcements. If there's regular announcements, please raise your hand. The first hand I saw is Councilwoman Porter. The floor is yours.
Thank you so much, Mr. President. First, I would like to honor the legacy and life of Ms. Patricia A. Burns, lovingly known as Ms. Pat on her passing last week. Ms. Pat of the Cherry Hill community and of the prominent Baltimore family Clarence D. Burns, affectionately and politically known as Do. Ms. Pat was a champion of local politics, often volunteering on campaigns for Quaisium Congressman, excuse me, Congressman Quaisium Fume, and the late Congressman Elijah Cummings. She was the mother of a former candidate, Sean Burns, of District 46, and she'll be deeply missed by her family near and far. I ask that the body continue to keep this family in your prayers as they prepare to celebrate her life on Friday. Next, I wanted to celebrate two major faith leaders in District 10. First, I'd like to honor Dr. Pastor Joan Wharton of Hemingway Temple, AME in Cherry Hill, on her 40-year pastoral anniversary. So she has been pastor for 40 years in the city of Baltimore. And then lastly, to honor Dr. Francis Tony Draper, CEO and President of the Afro Newspaper, on her retirement as pastor of the Freedom Temple AME Church, well, Freedom AME Zion Church in Lakeland. And so I celebrate those two major faith leaders in District 10. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Councilwoman Porter. I see the hand raised of Chairman Stokes. The floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. Senator Dalton, who was the first black senator here in Baltimore, passed away. I want a moment of silence for that. I also want to thank the Ravens for donating 17 years at their Helping Up mission. For 17 years, they've been donating brand-new coats, hats, and gloves to them young men. And also, I want to mention, I know we've got some Raven fans in here, so I've been working with the Ravens in the NFL. So this Sunday, right where Penn Station is, we're actually blocking the street off and watch the game on the digital screen. So we're going to have some food trucks, some speakers, some DJs. So if you ain't not doing anything, bring your blanket and your, and your Raven stuff and your chair, and let's watch the game on that screen. Thank you, Mr.
Is the entire city invited, or just members of?
City.
Now, Chairman Stokes has been working on that for a very, very long time. I've heard some very intense conversations that he's been on to twist some arms to make that happen. So congratulations to you. That's going to be an exciting time for the entire city.
I'd like to thank the city agency and the mayor's office, because they've been very supportive. Thank you.
Thank you for including that as well, Chairman Stokes. At this point, Madam Vice President, the floor is yours.
So two good announcement.
I'm sorry.
Oh, my announcements before.
Does anyone else have an announcement? All right, there we go. Okay, go ahead.
Two, two positive announcements before we do the regular information. And both of them have to do with the Maryland Association of Counties acronym Mako. Every year, as Mako prepares for their winter conference, they give out two very prestigious awards. One is for a urban program, and one is for rural area program. And the, the application, when you, when the city or county submits it, it has to be a program that is not funded by general funds. It has to come from other sources. And Baltimore City hasn't won a, an award like this from Mako in a very, very long time. But this year, one was submitted from the Department of Housing, and the program was the Baltimore City Vacant Building Rooftop Collapse, that program that basically was implemented after, you know, the fires and dealing with all the vacancies that we have here. So I think we need to give a clap and congrats to our city for winning this innovation award. And so Baltimore City will be recognized at the winter conference in January to receive this award, and again, it's Mako's County Urban Innovation Award. So if you all want to tweet that out, you can. And then also, you all know that I was past president of the Maryland Association of Counties, also a graduate of their Academic for Excellence and Local Government programs. So I now will be serving on the council for that academic program. So I encourage all of you, thank you. So I encourage my colleagues to, you know, when you go to these Mako conferences to, you know, it's, it's something that, it's an addition to help keep you motivated and active and just, you know, and a good educational piece as you continue to do your jobs. And I'll be joining on this council, representatives from the University of Maryland College Park, Park School of Policy, which they were the ones that picked the award winners for the award. Mako was not affiliated, basically, with that part. The University of Maryland Policy Department picks those awards. And we went up against Anne Arundel County, Baltimore County, and what's the other one that's connected? Howard County. And most of them submitted seven or eight programs, and we submitted that one program and won. So kudos to our city and the Housing Department for being a part of, of this congratulatory thing. So on that note.
And before you continue to that note, just one quick shout-out to the, the young men of maroon and gold from East Baltimore for going down to Annapolis and bringing another state championship home to Baltimore City. That's Paul Lawrence Dunbar, varsity football team, led by Coach Lawrence Smith. We know that Dunbar's trophy case is pretty filled, but it's going to get one additional title and a lot more rings for those young, deserving men. So with that, Madam Vice President, the floor is yours.
All right. The next meeting of the City Council will be held on Thursday, December 8th, 2022, at 5:00 PM. And may we have a moment of silence for Patricia A. Burns. And just quickly, I knew Patricia Burns personally. She was a coworker with me at the, when I worked at the State Department of Labor Licensing and Regulation, and she was also very involved in that Toastmasters program and was one of those founding members here, and also participated in my very first campaign when I ran for council. So prayers to her and her family. Rosalynn Smith was a president in Council Member Burnett's district, and also, may we continue to have prayers for the now 300 homicides in our city, and the continued prayers for families that are continuing to suffer from the pandemic and our opioid epidemic. Sorry, I want to add Senator Dalton to that prayer list.
Thank you. There being no new business before the desk, we will, this concludes the 45th meeting of the 73rd term of your Baltimore City Council. Baltimore, I love you.